Hello.
How are you Janet?
Hanging by a thread, how are you?
Oh. You don't by happen have tomorrow after you.
No.
I'm sorry.
Trying to get the groundless out, so. I'll be busy right up until probably Tuesday like. Doing that.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Right folks. It is five thirty. And it appears we have a quorum. So Janet's nodding. I can count. All right, great. I'm gonna call this meeting of the very city planning commission to order. First up, are there any adjustments to our agenda? All right, that's a no, cool. Number three, approval of minutes. Have folks had a chance to look at the? Draft minutes from oh so long ago. And just. Just to clarify, any new members are allowed to vote on these even if they weren't there. The reason for that is, I think, if we don't have a unanimous vote, then we have to do a roll call in the. Yeah, so anyway, just putting that out there, not to influence anyone's, anyone's vote, but. Yeah, if we don't, basically. If people think the minutes are all right. We can have a motion to approve those minutes from May. That is. Are you saying so moved?
So moved.
All right. Yeah. That Rosemary, was that you? Okay, yeah, great. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
Not sure about Joe. Okay, cool. That's a raised hand. That's unanimous in favor. Our minutes from May are approved. And apparently I'm clicking on stuff with my other hand by accident. Sorry. So sort of jumping around. Okay. Next up, number four is public comment. It does not appear that we have got members of the public here, so I don't think we've got to worry about that. Worry is the wrong word. I guess what I mean is it's. It's not something we have to do. All right, on to new business. Number five. First thing we have is election of our officers. We have, you know, three officer positions, Chair, Vice Chair. And and Secretary. And the way we'll do it is for each of the positions, we can have nominations, people throw hats in the ring, and then we can have a motion to elect after we're done nominating. These elections will take effect at the end of the meeting, so that nobody has to suddenly switch roles. As a result of the elections. Okay, so we can kick that off with election for Chair. Or rather, to say nominations for Chair.
I'd like to ask if the current officers are willing to continue.
All right, so we could just do a straight across the board. There's one exception in that our current, our Vice Chair has stepped down from the planning commission, so we would need a new Vice Chair. But I am certainly willing to continue in my position.
Likewise, am I coming through now, I hope?
You are.
Perfect.
Loud and clear. Yeah, so so basically, yeah, if if there are any other nominations, I guess. If, yeah, if anybody would like to nominate anybody else for those positions, we can do those. If not, then we could just focus on Vice Chair. So but I don't want to either encourage or discourage anything on that. All right, but I'm not hearing anything. I did ask if Becky, who is the the third senior most planning commissioner, if you can believe it. If she would serve as Vice Chair, and she said that she would, so I'm gonna nominate her in absentia. Now, are there any other nominations for in absentia? I don't even know why I said that. She's not here. Is that, yeah, no reason to get Latin about it.
I see her on the list.
I'm so sorry. I've got the wrong Zoom view. Sorry, sorry, Becky.
No worries.
Now, and and there is a member of the public too, right? Yeah, great. So sorry for not knowing how to use Zoom. I'm out of practice. Okay, anyway, but I was I was nominating you for Vice Chair. Sorry for getting the, you know, miscues there. Are there any other nominations?
I move with closed nominations.
Cool. Is there a second for that? Thanks for doing this right, because I kind of forgot how to do it exactly.
I'll second Rosemary.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to close nominations for our three positions.
Thank you guys.
Oh, hey, yeah.
No, really, thank you.
All right, so yeah, all in favor of the closing nominations, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All right. I think that's everyone. I gotta, I gotta get my view better, so I can't see everybody all at once. It's weird. Somebody else can probably, and they could tell me if it's not unanimous. Sounds unanimous. So those nominations are closed. I think. What we need now is just a motion for the, you know, that slate of three people, since there were only one nomination for each seat. And we could do it all in one, all in one go, right? Oh, someone said so moved.
That was me, Caitlin.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Back in.
All right. I'll pick David. I heard him a second beforehand, but all right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of electing me and Becky and Joe as our officers. Raise your hand or say aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay, that sounds unanimous. If it's not, somebody pipe up. Okay. Cool. All right, we we have officers. Thanks. And we'll try to do it on schedule in July next year. But, you know. Things happen. All right, next up on our new business. In order is creation of an RFP subcommittee, and this is something that David brought up, and I think it's a good idea. The idea of it is, we would like to. Make sure that the RFP process moves forward, and so I think that Janet said that she was on the verge of getting the RFPs posted. And then if that's the case, then the RFP subcommittee's main role would be to interview candidates who are, you know, the people who are putting forward their proposals. And then, you know. Supporting Janet in making that process move along, so that then. The full planning commission can, you know, make a call, say like, oh, yes, this is the person or, you know. Organization, and then they're gonna do it. David, does that sound like what you had in mind?
It it does.
All right. So I think. David had mentioned three people. I think it's a good number. I don't want to be one of the people if I could, if I can, if I can avoid it. But that's, so basically, if three people would step forward to do this subcommittee, I think it's a good number.
So I have a question that might influence whether I step up or not.
Yeah.
So it's like what you're just saying, it would part of the, part of the, or maybe even the main sort of. Responsibility here would be, would be interviewing the RFP applications. So given that, is that something that would likely be happening during like normal business hours kind of thing, or could it be kind of anytime? Because if it's. I would be happy to do that, but if it's gonna be something that's happening during normal business hours, I can't, because I kind of am in a new job, and it's hard to get time off right now. Otherwise, so if that's a factor, then I I shouldn't step up, but if it's not, then I would be willing to consider it. Or do we really know?
I think Janet would have to take a guess on that one.
I think that we could do it after hours. It probably will likely depend on how many we get for each of the. How many response.
Of course, yeah.
So. I foresee it to be relatively simple. If we get a lot, then it's a matter of potentially shortlisting, so then the subcommittee could be doing a little bit more than just. Reviewing and recommending to the planning commission, but let's wait and see what we get. If that, if that helps, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, with that caveat, I think I would be willing to take part, just. Just being cautious of the the timing is all. If if there's not three others who want to do it.
I'm guessing David might.
No, well, my concern is, I'm gonna be gone most of the month of September. And then I'm going to be and not available for for remote thing. Then in October and November. I will probably be around half the time, and I will be available remotely the other half, so my schedule's a little funky. Otherwise, I would be happy to, but I'm concerned I might not be available about the time when the work's getting done.
All right, well, I guess if we don't have three people to do it, it might be that we don't. Oh, yeah, Rosemary, go ahead.
Well, I'm a newbie, but I'd happy, I'm happy to step up. Be part of the the group.
Yeah, I think I think it's, I mean, you're hardly a newbie at this point. I mean, I think we're, you know, everyone, everyone's in the thick of it.
Anyways.
Yeah, so. I think if we we got a got a third person, then we have. Is there a chair or a subcommittee? I mean, I'm not exactly sure what the structure of this would be. Or is it just three, three people who who work together?
It would be up to the subcommittee to decide.
Awesome.
Conduct their business.
Well. Is there someone who's willing to be a third? Well, if not, I don't think this is a, I don't think it's a huge deal to have a subcommittee. It's nice. I mean, I don't know, a two-person subcommittee could theoretically work. As long as they agree. But I think that's the difficulty, right? You'd like to have a an odd number. All right, well, I said I wouldn't unless there wasn't another option.
I'm willing. I also have the same constraint of having to do this after business hours.
And so so would I, I think, so, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean. If if you're willing to. I mean, my sense is that this subcommittee would have sent, like, we're not saying here are things you have to do. But the planning commission is giving this group of three people the power to do stuff if it helps. And so it's like, you know, like, you've got the ability to. Help Janet move stuff along, but I don't think that you'll be, I I don't think we're saying like, do everything that you have to do to make sure this happens by. You know, like August thirty first, just make something up. That, yeah, so I guess then. Sorry, my brain, I don't know. Yeah, what I I guess what I meant to be saying is that the responsibilities are, you know, only as much as you seek out to, but the hope is to get. If there's a smaller body, it can do more more quickly than trying to get all of us together to do something. And as long as it's three, it's lower than quorum, so you're fine. Janet, go for it.
Well, I just wanted to let folks know that 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 I I've got plenty of subcommittees here when we review internal RFPs and RFQs and. Shortlist people, so I can certainly help. Help the process by coaching people along. It's it's not gonna be a lot of work. But the help is incredibly appreciated.
Yeah, David.
Just as a comment, I think a lot of the work of the committee is going to be reviewing proposals that come in. And and again, just from a selfish perspective, I think if a, if somebody's making a proposal. To do the work. If they were coming to a planning commission, a meeting, they would be coming after work hours. So I don't know why it would be a problem for them. To meet with a subcommittee after work hours. In fact, I would be concerned if they weren't able to do that. So that's just some thoughts.
Yeah, that's a good addition. That makes sense.
Well, I think if. Joe and Rosemary and Becky are willing to. To form this subcommittee. Then I think we could have a motion for those members to have the. The power to help Janet in whatever way is appropriate to. Get those landed. Yeah, I thought I, when I started the sentence, I thought I have a better, a better ending to it. Someone want to say it better?
I appreciate it.
So I would, I would move that we appoint a subcommittee. With Rosemary, Joe, and Becky to help Janet with review of the RFPs. And. We hope make a recommendation to the full planning commission, not recommendations to the full planning commission after their review.
Very well said. Thanks. So we have a second? I'll second that. Okay, yeah, Caitlin, you got it? All right. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor. Raise your hand or say aye.
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 Well, that is everyone. Thanks. I figured out, and yeah, thanks, really. Also, yeah. I figured out how to see everybody once. Anyway. All right, that motion is passed. Thank you, three, for for stepping up to help with this. It'll be, you know, it's a big win to have the have the grants, and we're just sort of, you know. Just just waiting to get, get people in to to help spend the money. Okay, new business number three. Is. This doesn't really require anything of us, but the ADU changes that we approved are gonna be going to council. Sometime soon. Janet wasn't sure which exact date it was, so that's why it's not in the agenda. But she wanted to inform us all that it was happening, so that we could be available if we wanted to, or at least. So someone may need to, possibly me. To to go to council to speak to that. Janet, did you want to say anything about it?
Sure, I just wanted to let you folks know the next. Full city council meeting is August twenty ninth. So that there's a special on Tuesday, and I can suck the tax rate. They don't want to entertain any other new business, so it's, you know, two weeks from. It's not. City council is not every other week anymore. It's it's twice a month. So with your nodding. I'd like to put it on city council's agenda for the twenty ninth. For the first reading of public hearing. And that's really when the council asks all their questions. If they're totally satisfied, they will move to move it to a second. Hearing and. Then it'll go into effect fourteen days after the second hearing, but. Like I said, I'd like to get it on and get this one off of it.
That sounds good, and I can, I can be there.
I'll plan to be as well.
Excellent. When we pass that, it was unanimous from the planning commission, right? Yeah, okay. Cool. Anything else on on that? Okay. Then. Now, new business number four is status update on planning stuff related to the flood. And I don't feel like there's any way we could possibly cover all of that, but we'll at least get started, right? Go ahead, Janet.
Well. Yeah, it's it's been quite a month, so I don't know if any of you were impacted by the flooding. Were impacted by any of the landslides that are going on. We have. Twenty-five noted. And twenty active landslides. The city's hired a. Geo-technical engineer to come in. We've had visits from the Army Corps of Engineers. State geologists, they've been all over looking at these. Phenomena. We've had landslides due to flooding. Properties not even in the flood zone. So it's been, you know, not only was the north end a war zone, unfortunately, and other areas. Where we were impacted by this. It's it's been tragic, this anyways. There was a house on Portland Street, that's a crossbar. Actually slid off its foundation due to a landslide. And was actually taken down yesterday. It was literally sitting. Like a Lincoln log, right in the city right of it. So the owner signed the structure over the city and the architecture. So then, so there's a loss to the groundless, right? A trailer on Oswald Street was impacted by a landslide. Just was pushed right off the foundation. Right to the edge of the street and killed our house. I have been gathering photographs of all the flooding. A lot of you have heard and seen that the Mary Street Bridge can't be. Can't be used. Some of the bridges acted as our. Debris backup. The trussel acted like a debris backup. It's it's.
Oh, which which bridge did you say? Sorry, I didn't quite catch.
That's okay, the Bourbon Street Bridge, which is right next to Arkey Miles. So our residents are really struggling, getting their their permits. They're frustrated, they're sad. Repairs are costing. It's just unreal. What they're costing. I walked around with state-led plane manager aside to our area and a representative from Florida Department of Emergency Management. Two weeks ago, they are assisting us with substantive damage determinations. And along with a list provided by. Some some volunteer groups, we're looking at upwards of a hundred and ten, could be less, could be more. Damaged homes. We'll go from there, try to figure out what is substantially damaged. So substantial damage means those people who whose foundations are compromised, who literally have to be built from the bottom up. And those are the folks that are going to have to follow today's flood hazard rules. Meaning they're gonna have to elevate their footfalls. Fill in their basements, raise their houses up. So that that work is still heading out of my office. Michelle and I are still just. We're learning on the fly. Thankfully, the state and others have done a lot of training. But it's it's not gonna be fixed anytime soon. The answers are learning as we go. So. It's taking a lot of our time for sure. Yeah, it's, it was pretty tragic. I could go on, but it's just a sad. Any questions?
Go ahead, David.
You're on mute.
Sorry, a couple of questions. One is, are there any zoning issues or interim zoning issues that the planning commission might want to? Look at that relates to any of the flood recovery. Things, and if so, is there kind of a timeframe that would require us to get get working on that stuff?
Thank you for asking that. We and other developers have been looking at some of our piglets in the Goldberry area. If you're familiar with envisioning what Berry City looks like. It's over, it's over above Beach Street. That's all our four, and those lots are all quarter acre lots. So we were to ever, Dima has actually said, we would love to come in and put down some houses for the people. But Berry City, obviously, is gonna have a lot of real estate, of course, where miles. We might have a lot of what appears to be vacant land for lots. But they're small piglet lots, so. I would love to start the conversation about looking at lot sizes. For re-zoning some of our areas. We've got some old pre-existing subdivisions. Our four has sixteen-foot setbacks all the way around. The folks up in Maplewood area who bought those lots, so the composter, are struggling with sixteen-foot setbacks. So. Those are the little things. And we don't even have to have the density conversation. But do we want to consider? Lowering, for the right word, lessening some of our setbacks, or at least doing that as interim measures. So that's what I'm saying.
Ordinarily, I would think we have a consultant coming, and we're going to be looking at these things. But are there some short-term things that are just prompted by by the situation we're in? That we might want to. Look at sooner. They may not be overarching changes, but at least some areas or something.
I don't know why I'm raising my hand, I guess, yeah. I don't want to just jump in in case somebody else was gonna talk. Yeah, I mean, I wonder if there's a way for us to. Have a short term. Sort of like, you know, overriding of. The zoning limitations to say that if you're replacing something. But I mean, if you're replacing something, it should be allowed already, right? I mean, this is not, I mean, so basically, like, what I'm trying to think is like. We do have bylaw modernization, and if our goal is to do something like. You know, to fix the future of Berry City, then we should do it, right? And if it's an emergency thing where people are saying like, well. You know, I need to replace this thing that was broken, then I. I'm curious exactly what the details are of like the sixteen-foot setbacks. It's like, is that, you're describing for the purposes of new development, they're saying that the sixteen-foot setback is, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think we got that wrong, definitely, and that was one of the things we were hoping to fix, like, you know, since last year. Earlier than this time last year.
There may be, for example, interim zoning that could be done in a certain area where there's paper streets or.
Yeah, right.
No, one neighborhood, so it's not so much infill, which we want to encourage. It's more setting something out that. Where where. A plan can do something a little different than the zoning might typically do, but we have to, we have to talk it, talk about it and think it through, but. It's just. The. Timing is, means we have to get going.
Yeah, I think what I, what I would ask, you know, for these these fixes, if Janet can identify the places where we need to do, you know, say like. For instance, off of, you know, Gold Street, is that what it's called? Goldway? I forget the, you know, gold something, right? What was that? Goldspur, a goldspur, right? So, okay. I, yeah, the, your, your mic is a little like crackly or something, so. No, it's okay. Yes, if we could identify. The area and what the problem is, I do think we could, we could have interim change that, you know, that will fix those problems, because. You know, as we've heard from developers, most of the things that people want to do make sense. It's just that we have rules that are preventing them, they, you know, rules that are made for one type of neighborhood that are getting the supply. So, yeah, I agree with David, basically, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
One, the the other question I had. Uh one, the the other question I had is, I've read about Montpelier's building requirements are are. It's a double-edged sword, but they're requiring businesses or people to who maybe had their um heating system or their electric boxes in a basement. To uh when they rebuild, to relocate them to be out of the flood zone. I don't think those rules are in place in Berry, but I'm I'm wondering how how that. How that might work and and, you know, the idea is we don't want to. Rebuild things that are gonna flood again in ten, five or ten years, the same way they do now, let's. You know, and and that's hard to say when there is an emergency going on and people are trying to get things going, but. Uh I think most people who were flooded out don't want to experience that again and should be thinking about things to. Um. Prevent, you know, at least help prevent some of the the problems that occur.
Janet.
Yeah, it is required already under our Berry City's flood hazard regulation. So people are required to elevate their utilities one foot above this flood elevation, Montpelier's too. Um. They have a new building in front of, so I don't know if they they have a riparian policy. So their policy may be that that they said it has to be on the first floor. For us, it's one foot above baseball elevation and likely most of those houses. In the north end, right off North Main Street, that is the first floor, because first floors got flooded. Um so we're starting to see the permits come in and we're trying to be adamant about this is where you have to put it. Um so we do have those rules in place already.
Okay. It, you know, it just seems counterproductive to keep making the same mistake over and over again.
Right. If and unless people apply for permits.
Um I don't think it's appropriate for the like, you know, the problems of right now, but I do think that we should also be thinking of. You know, we should have a bigger picture plan for what do we do with this volume of water in the future? Um because it seems uh foolishly optimistic to assume that it will be only, you know, eleven years before the next such flood. And so I. I think we are in a better, in a better position than many, you know, uh valley bottom communities and that. The total watershed that comes our way is not, you know, it's not vast, it's not unstoppable. And so I'm not gonna put forward any uh any ideas for solutions. But I think that one of the things that we will need to consider um as a planning commission is. You know, what is what is our big picture plan for how we manage the water that that comes? I would like for us to have a vision for the future that does not involve people getting their first floors flooded frequently. And it does not involve having to raise every structure that is currently uh, you know, threatened by being flooded. So, but then, like I say, I'm not gonna put anything's out there, but. Um. I don't think we're screwed, is what I'm saying, but I think we have a we have to have a plan to uh to be better in the future. Thank you.
I think I have two questions. One, um Janet, I just wanted to clarify what I think I heard you said, which is anybody who's who was flooded. To their first floor, they have to rebuild up about up? No, that's.
No, um it starts with substantial damage.
Oh, the same, okay.
They might have water on their first floor, but substantial damage means. Um their their foundation was compromised um with much bigger crucial things with their structure.
Got it.
Should they elevate to the utilities to the first floor or to the top of the wall in the basement? Absolutely.
Got it. Okay, so that only applies to people who have substantial damage, those requirements. Or maybe you could just tell us where we would find that and I can go find, like, I'm happy to go find the answer myself. I think I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah, well, in this certain case, right now, they'll have to, should they have done because they're in the flood zone? Yes, they should.
Okay, okay, and then I think my other question is, um. There's been talk about like FEMA buyouts and what should happen with parts of town. And I just wondered if the planning commission has a role in. Um in that process at all.
When we did the buyouts uh back in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, the commission did not, that is a. Um we could certainly help make recommendations, be a part of the public group that that uh weighs in. Um but it's the city who does the applying for the buyouts. And those buyouts, those particular properties have to be approved by the city council. So, for example, when we flooded earlier in twenty eleven. The Vermont Economic Residency Initiative came out and said. Um the Harrington area, um you could take down all twenty-five of those houses in that area to help with our storage. But the city council and city staff at the time, we said, fine, cops. Right, so we bought out quality, so when the city does a buyout through Vermont Emergency Management, you know, funds. We will own the property forever, nothing that ever we built there ever, so it's green space and protected area. So. I think uh a buyout, a good area for a buyout is the end of Scampy Square, and that's what I'm gonna recommend. But should we be the city buying our houses in the north end? No. No, I I wanna see the north end back, where, as Michael said, we're not screwed, we. We can do this, um there are other areas we can improve a lot. Um but we need, I hear the term buyout being used by FEMA when they're talking with residents. And those are funds given to residents to help them improve their properties. So this FEMA buyout is not the same as the city's buyout. And whatever we decide to do or not do is at least a two-year process. It took us two years at least to get to um the free properties on Harrington and the two properties on fifty three. So it's it's nothing that happens quickly. So there was a roundabout way of explaining.
No, I appreciate that, and I think the reason I'm asking is kind of back to Michael's point of like having a plan for. Flooding in the future and where that water goes and whether um that's part of that conversation.
Janet, you said that like Montpelier has a riparian plan, for example, and so, I mean, we we would have a role in that, probably.
Absolutely, and we could need to consider that, Michael.
Uh oh, and uh in terms of the uh the. Um. The stream intervention at Harrington Avenue, I mean, it was really effective. It just uh there was, there's way too much water. But I mean, but it it did what it was put there to do in part, I mean, the trash rack, like, you know, it stopped it from uh from blocking the uh the culvert. Uh that's that's correct, right? Just, yeah, that was my observation, but I'm. I'm not an engineer, what do I know? Uh yes, but I think, you know, I I think that having us look at something like a riparian plan, or, I mean, I don't know what the right names for the kinds of planning that would be appropriate are. Um but. That's something we'll do, I expect. Uh do we have anything else on planning around the flood? And I know I said we were not gonna get to everything and uh. We we certainly didn't. This is gonna keep coming back. So uh but certainly, if you have anything else to to ask or or say, we we could do that now, too. All right, we'll move on, um and like I said, it's gonna come back, right? Uh uh number five, a new business is reviewing the current uh North Main Street plan. Uh my intention was not to do this in substantial detail, but just to um. Uh touch on it, since one of our two um grants and RFPs that we are putting out there is to revisit and improve this plan. Um it makes sense for us to look at what it is now. And then uh say, what do we want to change about it? I know I have my own ideas, but I uh I won't lead with them. Oh, yeah, Janet, did you wanna um? Sorry, I, we didn't exactly talk in in advance about who was gonna talk about this thing. To characterize this plan, like, it is for this, the um. Downtown, the side of Main Street towards Summer Street, uh it's for those those blocks that are in between, uh you know, like uh Elm Street, Maple, Main Street, Summer Street. Um and it has broadly speaking, two parts. One is saying. Hey, let's take the parking lots that are all over the place and demolish some buildings and move them to the center and then hopefully build some new buildings on the outside. One half of it, the other half is improving streetscapes on uh. Uh summer and. Um and Elm Street and Maple Avenue. And so to say it's half is not exactly fair. I it seems to me like it's about those two things. It gives a lot more space to the uh. What do they call them? The parking corridor parking is a parking court, parking parking courts, connected parking courts is what it says. Sorry, I'm saying this with the tone of voice that is like dripping with turpentine. It's not my intention. I was just trying to describe it.
That's the descriptive of the point, so yes.
Yeah, yeah.
For some of you folks that looked at at least uh, you know, the the website link and uh. I haven't yet read the text. It's not a lengthy plan, it's really not. Um but uh there's some good visuals. You can put my on somewhere. And see what was the provision.
You're kind, you're kind of quiet, Janet, sorry. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm using the monitor microphone, so it's not working out well. Um just click on the links that are out there on the city website uh to give you a better visual. Than reading the the visuals within the forty-two page plan are as good as the ones on the website.
Well, uh yeah, resume.
Um there are a few of you who were on the commission or or participated in in. This uh plan, and I'm just wondering, you guys are probably pretty familiar with it, David, I think you were on the commission then. I mean, can you generally speak, say, you know, like? Are are we, did it, you know, did it do us any good? Have we made made progress? Over the last ten or twelve years, or, you know, is it, is it a a lot more to do or revisit?
My answer is both. Um. There there are a couple of things, the city place development and the downstreet housing. That that actually fit in pretty well with what this plan laid out. Um I think there's been some uh stuff on Summer Street as far as on-street parking. That that was recommended is in the streetscape things, uh there's been nothing done. The parking areas, I think. The one thing that was done was the, what was the Orange Beach Computer on Keith Avenue was was torn down, that's a. A city parking lot, but I don't think there's anything about connected parking courts that are happening, though you can kind of. Look down all that area and and get a sense of what a parking court might look like, and it's not pretty, so. Um at least not without doing a lot of landscaping. The other thing I noted was um. At least at the time, the park, the studies, and they'd have to be updated, the parking lots were not really heavily utilized. And, you know, if if an ideal is to have eighty-five percent utilization. And the parking lots are twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent full. Um even thinking about future development, that sort of raises some some flags and things to think about. Uh so those were a few comments, but if you look at the pictures and and kind of some of the things that have happened. A lot, a lot has happened, but the. Uh the area kind of be between Summer Street and North Main is is still not, nothing's really. That productive has happened. That's my, that's my sense.
Uh yeah, I I agree with David, and I just missed uh this plan. I joined the planning commission, like, I think. Kind of forget exactly, it was in twenty twelve, right? Um twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, um. I keep, I keep trying to remember it, and then I just go to that in my brain, um. The fortunately, the parking utilization study, you know, has been, uh you know, uh has been updated now because there was um. There was research done to support the, you know, see if the TIF would get a parking garage or something. And uh and the consultants were like, y'all don't need any more parking ever. Um that's, I'm paraphrasing, but uh basically, that's what they said. They were like, there's no, there's no foreseeable future need for additional parking, I think is more what they said. Uh yeah, yeah, so from my perspective, I think that focusing on parking was just, you know, it was just wrong. Um and that like, it was a mistake that, you know, that came out of a particular um. Like, uh what's? Like a convention in uh in urban planning that was already pretty old-fashioned by the time the plan was made. And what do we, you know, what do we plan for in the future? I feel like it's a little more open-ended, but what I would like, what I myself would like to see is for us to not have the like. Fundamental goal of our plan for this area to say, we want to make parking better. Because like, what we want is we want to make the living in Berry better. And so like, and of course, the idea was parking is gonna support the downtown businesses and so on, um. And I said, I said I wasn't gonna complain about this too much. Um hey, anybody else want to say anything first? Um I really can stay out of it.
Well, I was gonna ask about parking because that was something that jumped out as me as well, um. And you've answered one of my questions, which was, do we really need more parking in downtown Berry? Um and I would love to see a different focus for this area as well.
Yeah, our municipal plan um uh as of twenty twenty focuses on connections as being like, that's the key goal because. You know, because of like the hodgepodge of municipalities that exist, it's, there's a constant struggle for, you know, who gets what slice of the pie. And our comparative advantage is like. You know, we can't compete with Berlin by saying like, hey, we're a better place to build a coals, because we're not, like, we don't have that land, it's not, it's not feasible. But we do have is we've got like great neighborhoods that are geographically very close to great downtown. And what I would love to see is for, so I mean, our municipal plan says, hey, let's make those connections better. And so if we had a plan for these streets, I mean, my feeling is that Summer Street is the greatest missed opportunity in Berry City. Because like, we have such dense residential development that is adjacent to it. And because of the way part, like, um are, we we have planned Summer Street for, you know, automobile traffic. It is not a connection, like, we, no one's gonna walk from Merchant Street to downtown because they're like, ah, it's. And I don't mean no one, I'm exaggerating, but what I mean to say is there's a huge disincentive toward people walking because it is unpleasant and dangerous. And so I would love to see a plan that says, hey, let's link these things that are both fantastic. Uh instead of building a, you know, kind of wall in the middle. Anyway, yeah, oh, hands are up. All right, Caitlin, you get to go, because David went before.
Thanks, um I'm obviously very new to all of this, but um. I I definitely support this idea of focusing more on pedestrians and streetscaping to make. Um the experience for people walking around downtown more pleasant. Um I know that, I noted that the Pearl Street pedestrian walkway wasn't envisioned as part of this plan, and I think that was a great. Um step in sort of making some of that connection, but having it go all the way through. To Summer Street, um seems like that could be a really great way to sort of take advantage of some of the thing that we've already accomplished. Um but yeah, I mean, I I think if this plan was focused on. The parking corridors and the streetscape improvements, I would rather see more focus on the the pedestrian, the person. The people planning and not the car planning. The people planning and not the car planning.
Here, here, uh, David, did you wanna?
Yeah, uh, other comment in terms of the those parking areas. If you look at the maps, large portions of the parking areas. Are not owned, publicly owned, they're privately owned. And that's gonna create a lot of challenges. Both in terms of what parking is actually available versus, you know. To to anybody versus private and it also creates a lot of impediments towards. Uh, doing things to change the character of that area without. Property owners. Uh, buy in.
That is true, and it uh, back when we did it, it cost six hundred thousand dollars to buy RMC's computer. I think I'm remembering that, right? Well, I mean. I think there's, I think there's a ton of room for improvement, uh, and this. Uh, and I think, on the other hand, there's also a lot of great stuff in this plan. Because it does an inventory of the streets that are there, like what their character is and like, you know, what they could be. And so I feel like there's like, you know, it's not like. It is a bad plan, I think that it is mostly a good plan, but our execution of it was focusing on like, you know, the sort of like. Site plan drawing of parking lots, instead of saying like, oh, what's what's all the rest of this? And so if we could have a plan that pulls out the stuff that we think is gonna strengthen the city. And then focus on like, all right, what are the actionable things that are gonna, you know, gonna lead to, uh. You know, making this vision actually happen. Uh. I'd love it. Um, did anybody else uh have anything, I mean, this one also like. This one's gonna come back big time because we're gonna get like, you know, somebody in here for the RFP and we're gonna be spending a. Uh, you know, a ton of time talking about the the details of it. Go ahead, Rosemary.
I'm just wondering, what is our goal, uh, time wise, uh, certainly? I think everybody's putting their two cents about how uh, how we should perceive, but I'm just wondering with the timeline, are we waiting for the consultant? Are we gonna start talking about this sooner than later?
Well, I kind of, I mean, like, I think if we have. An idea of what we're looking for or like what are what are broad goals are, I don't know if we should dig into it too far. I mean, certainly, I think we could do things like, we could do site visits and walk around to make sure that we have context. Um, I wouldn't wanna like get into trying to like, you know, like pre-plan or something. But at it, yeah, but on the other hand. I don't wanna be entirely held back by, you know. If if we're unable to get a planner, you know, a consultant to come in, um. Well. I, we we don't wanna wait forever, so I don't, I don't have a fixed idea, but um.
But are we obligated as as the planning commission to the city, I mean? Sorry.
Uh, it should have happened, we we, yeah, RFPs should already be out, the problem here is really just resources. And uh, just like, you know, cuz Janet had four jobs and now she has three and a half jobs or something, so it's more like three, maybe more like three. Uh. So, yeah, we're 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 behind where we should be, but we're also not running out of runway, right, Janet, I mean, there's like. We have a certain amount of time to spend the money once we won the grant. So, we're not, uh. Yeah, we wanted to be done already, uh, but we we also have like the real limitations uh that are that are around us. Yeah, so anyway, but I think that um, things that we can do, um, I mentioned site visits and talking about it and maybe, I mean. Maybe this is a good thing to do before the weather is bad, so we could be looking at that, you know, next month or the month after, if it lines up well. So, I mean, it could be that there's other priorities that it turns out the planning commission should focus on first. So like, if, for instance, we were looking at like, what interim zoning changes can we make? Um, the, like in in the short term, it makes sense to focus on that, um. But I think. You know, balancing that against, uh, let's, you know, get out and walk around like the, you know, the the area covered by this plan. Um, I think that that's pretty, uh, that'd be pretty useful. Janet, go for it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a big proponent of. Of site visits or at least. Um. Context, right? Um, it's, it's not, it's not easy to present. Ideas and talk about things if you really don't know where these buildings or these places are. Fortunately, this is in our downtown. Well, but I do see it with other committees, um. So, I would encourage. Knowing where this, where these places are, so you can get in the media as well. Uh, as we continue to talk about that, thank you.
Well, I'm hoping we can do that. Um, I I also uh really appreciate those for context. Um, is there anything else that anybody wanted to touch on for this, uh, um? Review of the the current plan? Okay, uh, yeah, go ahead, Becky.
Uh, someone mentioned that, um, the private business owners who own most of the property affected, um. Is there a plan or would that be part of what the consultant that we hire does to engage those people as part of this process? Or do we do that? I'm just curious, like, if we go off and do a plan that they're like, yeah, that's nice, but we don't have anything to do with that, um. And then we've got a plan that's on a piece of paper and. Not gonna get us very far.
My, oh, go ahead, Janet.
Uh, just, uh, to add, what I heard about this plan, um, uh. From some of the business owners, um, claim that they, they were never. Talked to, didn't know that this was being planned and. And they're never gonna tear down their building to allow this, that or the other thing, so. Regardless of whether it happened or not. I think it's a good idea at least to let them know we're talking about it, right?
Uh, yeah, what I was gonna say is that I think that outreach is really typical for making a plan. But I think that the specific knowledge of like, you know, who are the property owners and are they like, um, you know, like. Uh, are they on board or oppositional, I feel like that's kind of like a, um. You know, like, that's the local knowledge thing, so like staff or us would be the people who would uh, would have that information. Or as Janet mentioned, not have that information or apparently not made or have it and not care about it, I don't know, it, yeah. Uh, I would say it happens all the time that a plan is made that is, uh, you know, uh. Do it, does not take into account the fact that somebody has to do it, um, and that they're not in the room. I would love to have a plan that makes fewer assumptions about what specific property owners will do. Because I feel like. You know, as a city, we have a lot of control over what we do. Um, and I would love to see us do more things that are making. The, you know, like investment and design decisions for city-owned assets that are supporting the outcomes that we want. More than saying. Hey, you know, we have to buy all of your stuff and turn it into our stuff, like it, that. One, I don't think it works very well, and two, like, that sounds like it's a great way to, like, get people on your bad side, like, oh, yeah. Anyway, uh. So I, I'm hoping that we, uh, we don't put ourselves in a situation where we, uh, are giving marching orders, uh. In the, in the same kind of broad way to the property owners. David.
Yeah, I think when this was done, there was a process and 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 public input. And at least according to the written plan, there were well-attended workshops, a couple of, um. Information, site reg- uh, informational discussion with area stakeholders to identify issues and opportunities for the area. To broadly notice public design workshops, uh, to obtain public. Input regarding the future of those areas and if I'm recalling right, there was kind of an opportunity to. For people to sort of sketch on paper what they might envision. So, in spite of. Local. Property owners saying they weren't consulted and all, I think there was a process and I think this is pretty typical for. At least in Berry for the planning process is we can do whatever we want and they don't show up and then they say they were never asked. And.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
And and so I would be careful about kind of thinking there wasn't a process here, it's just, you can't, you can't. Tell people they have to come. And they have to be engaged. And you can't tell them they can't complain about it after if they don't take part.
Very true. But then if we make a plan that involves, that requires them to be on our side, then it's a little bit, uh, it's a little bit awkward when they're not. But I agree with you, I mean, uh, yeah, the shirets are cool, uh, that's the thing where everybody pretty, you know, like draws about the idea, right, I mean. I think, I mean, they're have, like, I wasn't there for those things, as it was, I think it was a little bit even before I was, um, in Berry City, but there was. Uh, a great deal of. Outreach that was part of the twenty fourteen master plan. And so I'm I'm hoping that we, uh. Were able to do something like that. All right, anybody else? Well, we will move on. Uh, to number six, uh, that's funny, is number six at the top level too, uh. Yeah, which is confirm the date of our next meeting, uh, that will be on September fourteenth, if I, we follow our normal schedule, um. Is that a date that works for folks? All right. Oh, go ahead, oh, except David maybe.
Yeah, I will be able to.
Yeah, right. Um, but I think we'll, I think we'll manage, hopefully, we, uh, yes, Janet.
Um, just, uh, wanna. Uh, have you all think about, this was a virtual only, um. If you wanna maintain virtual only or you want in person is to let Michael know, so when he and I set the agenda. Uh, we know how to get the word out to you.
All right. I mean, I'll always come virtually if I have that option, cuz then I get to turn off my computer and go see my family like that. Um, but I understand that there's, uh, there's many different preferences. So, but yeah, let me know, um, you can just email me. And I will, uh. I'll work with Janet about it. Uh, great, so our meeting will be on September fourteenth and we will, uh, Janet and I will figure out. You know, how the site visit stuff will will slot in, um, if it's the next meeting, well, that probably won't be virtual, um, but, uh. This is site visit, anyway. Uh, yeah, but we'll figure it out. All right, great, uh, any other staff updates, Janet?
No, I think y'all know what I'm working on.
I didn't, you know, just, uh, it's on the agenda, so. All right, um. Then we've got a roundtable, um. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to? I always feel like I should probably like go through and call everyone's names, but it's such a drag, so just, um, if you have anything for roundtable, just raise your hand and I will call you. Caitlin.
Um, this is a little selfish, but since I, this is my first planning commission meeting, I was kind of hoping if everyone could kind of. I know Mike, cuz he's my neighbor.
That's, that's really, that, um, yeah. You know, and I should have introduced Caitlin also as like a new member, but I, I don't know. I apologize, uh, yeah, yeah, so i- i- in any case, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, you you know me, I'm I'm Michael on the chair. We we live two houses down from each other, okay, um. Yeah, is there an obvious order to go in, I'm just gonna call you, call on people in order, all right, yeah, so, Rosemary.
Hi, welcome Caitlin, I've been on the planning commission for a year, was just reappointed, so looking forward to working with you and the and the rest of the gang. Uh, born and raised in Berry and I'm also on the, uh, Board of Civil Authority. Welcome.
All right, David.
Yeah, uh, welcome, glad to have you, uh, I've been on the planning commission for a long time. Uh, I think since around two thousand and five, but I'm not. Not positive, but that seems like a long time. And, um. I am retired, but I worked at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Uh, for many years and before that, I actually worked in some municipal planning jobs in Ohio and in Vermont.
Yeah.
Hey, so yeah, so welcome, um. Yeah, like you said, I've been on for about a year, we actually came on at the exact same time, um, so we've been on pretty much. Both came in at the same time and we're also just reappointed, um, so yeah, been about a year, it's been kind of a new thing for me. Yeah, just, it's just been a really interesting thing, like, um. I'm not sure, I had a train of thought there, but I kind of lost it, um, but anyway, yeah, so. I guess that's it.
Thanks, Becky.
Hi, um, welcome, I'm Becky, I've been on the commission, I think, for two years. Um, and I moved to Berry in twenty twenty, um, yeah, and I have a background of, I was on the Energy Committee in Mount Keeler for a while. A while and on, involved in local government and Marshfield as well before moving to Berry.
Raylene.
Hi, I'm Raylene Minier, I've been on the planning commission. Almost a year now and, um, definitely learning lots and. Looking forward to speaking with you more and getting to know you and. Working together on this.
Thanks, and I mean, I guess I can introduce myself.
Yeah, I was gonna do, yeah.
Hi, everyone, I'm I'm Caitlin Corkins, um, I've lived in Berry since. Berry City since, um, two thousand and twelve. Um, I work for the, uh, State of Vermont in the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation. Um, but I also work with a bunch of planners in our department, so tangentially, um, involved in planning. Um, yeah, and I grew up in Bristol, Vermont, so I'm sort of a. Been in Berry for ten years, but not a, not a long time.
Uh, Janet, do you wanna, you know, introduce yourself, I mean, I'm sure every, everyone knows who you are now, but.
Sure, um, and Caitlin and I, I know each other from, um, all these little things that we go to over the years. Um, Janet, I have, I have been in Berry City now for, it'll be twelve years next month. Um, starting out as the zoning administrator and I've worked my way up through to, um, planning director, so I'm in charge of. Assessing and planning and planning, moment. Born and raised outside of Brooklyn, New York, um, I came to Vermont, uh, via college. In Plattsburgh, outside of Plattsburgh. And, uh, lived here in eighty-seven, so. There is my second home here, besides Woodburn, right? I I love this city. I love the people here. I get pretty passionate. Welcome to the planning.
Thanks, and thanks everyone for indulging me.
No, I say, it's, it's, it's not, you know, it's not an indulgence, uh, should have, should have done it anyway, um. All right, um, did anyone have anything else for roundtable? Okay. Well, uh. Next up would be our adjourning, I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight and, uh, and every time we manage to actually get a meeting. Uh, but I'm I'm hoping we're gonna have a lot to do in the near future. Um, anyone may, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'll motion to adjourn.
Okay, great, I'm motion, we got a second? Our second, there we go, I have a second, second of the, and, um, yeah, motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, we are adjourned, folks, uh, have a very nice evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.